Rise for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. If you could turn and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who wish to stand here, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You may be seated. Before we start with the roll call of councilpersons, I was notified that Councilperson Grine is on his way. So there's no need to excuse him tonight, and then we will make some sort of announcement when he arrives for the record that he is now present. So that way we can win, because it would be well before we vote. So that way we don't have any robbers' rules of order snags with his absence at the moment and his presence in a few minutes. So if you could, at this time, call the roll.
Lehman?
Here.
Podak?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Grine? Mendoza?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
All right, again, for the record, we'll say Councilperson Grine is not here. We expect him in a few minutes. Minutes of the council meeting previous.
I'll move to approve the previous council meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, you have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker for the approval of the council meeting minutes from the last meeting. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, those haven't been approved. Do we have any communications?
I have none.
All right, report of committees. Finance Committee.
Nothing new to report, but the next meeting will be Tuesday, September 16th, at 5:30 p.m. in council chambers.
All right, thank you very much. Public Affairs Committee.
There are a few community events to highlight this evening. City Council's Public Affairs Committee will be hosting our third quarterly convos with council in the Elbow Room at Kemosabe's this Saturday, September 6th, at 11:00 a.m. A free community movie night will take place at Jackson Park, also this Saturday, September 6th, beginning at 8:00 p.m. with the movie Mufasa, starting at dusk. The event is sponsored by Downtown Reinvented and Daddy and Kay's. Popcorn will be provided by Pop-Pop's Kettle Corn, with additional stands from Grandma Lupe Lemonade Shake-Ups and others. Attendees are encouraged to bring their own blankets, lawn chairs, and snacks to enjoy the film. Looking ahead to next Thursday, September 11th, at 10:00 a.m., the City of Fostoria invites the public to join them at the Fostoria Fire Department for a memorial service to honor those who lost their lives on 9/11. Next Saturday, September 13th, the Fostoria Church of the Nazarene will host their fourth annual Fall Festival from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at 339 Sandusky Street. The festival will include free games, food, and bounce houses. Also, next Saturday, September 13th, the Urban Woody Brewery will be hosting Oktoberfest from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And finally, on Sunday, September 14th, the 15th Annual Run the Res 5K will take place at Gray Park. Events begin with the Kids Fun Run at 10:00 a.m. for children ages three to nine, followed by the 5K at 11:00 a.m. Registration closes 15 minutes prior to each race. Participants will receive a shirt and goodie bag, with awards presented to the top overall male and female runners, the top three finishers in each 5K age group, and ribbons for all Kids Fun Run participants. Thank you. That is all.
All right, thank you very much. And just for the record of the video and audio minutes, we want to reflect that Councilperson Grine came in. It was 6:03. You probably saw that on video if you're watching it, but just for the record. Thank you. Law and Ordinance Committee.
Nothing new to report. Just a reminder that the next Law and Ordinance Committee will meet on Tuesday, September 16th, at 5:15 here in council chambers.
All right, thank you very much. Report of the officers. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to request that the airport lease be passed as an emergency so that we can get the lease signed and so that the lessor can get established and begin operations. Kevin Klein is the sole proprietor of Angle to Attack Aviation. He is currently the mechanic for the Bowling Green State University Airport Operations. He works there on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, and would establish operations in Fostoria three weekdays per week. Having him here will help fill up our hangars with planes and make the airport much more viable.
Thank you. Safety Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you may have seen, and if you haven't had a chance, I urge you to go down and take a look at the substantially completed so far, the ODOT project down on Lidle Street and 23 South. A very nice, smooth ride. I know they have some pieces and parts to finish up yet, but very happy with that project and the results of it so far. And then we have some numbers so far from the Davy Tree Project, where they're going through, looking at all the trees in the community. As of the, I think it was the 28th of August, they had looked at 3,473 total sites. And they had made a listing of the species of 2,517 trees, 932 planting sites, 24 stumps that need to be removed, and they had found so far four hazard trees and some hangars and dead limbs that mostly been taken care of so far. We have bottom retrieve service engaged, as we talked about at the last meeting, and he's been hitting those pretty much soon as they find them. So that project is moving right along. We're really happy with that one. Originally, we weren't sure. We had, I think we had a total of 7,800 and some odd sites that was part of our contract, so we weren't sure if they were going to make it all the way through the cemetery and the parks, but now it looks like they will. So that is great news. Mr. Dan Duran wanted me to pass on to you that we've been having our budget hearings, as we've talked about. From that came, for 2026, we had been looking in the budget for a service truck, but they had found one that is a used and very gently-used service truck that there's some funds within, one of, I think, the sewer plant fund, that they're going to take and move the money so they can get that. Truck right now is on hold. He's going to bring legislation to you at the next council meeting. We'd like to go ahead and give that one while we have it on hold. So he'll ask you then to pass that as an emergency. We've had a couple different of our department heads look at it, and we're pretty happy with that one, especially now. Takes us two or three years to get a new truck when we order them, so we'll be able to put that into use. And then Renee Smith had talked to me earlier today and wanted to pass along longtime staple of these Fostoria City Council meetings, Mr. Paul Allison's birthday coming up on Monday. So we wanted to make sure that we wished him a happy birthday. We're always glad to see him, and we're glad to see him back at city council meetings.
I'm a year younger.
Yeah, that's it. He's gone back in time, a year younger this year. So other than that, that's my report for tonight, and any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But if not, we'll pass on stuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director of Law.
Thank you. I have quite a bit tonight. I'll start with the easy stuff. Looking at our new business, the first piece of new business, the Plan of Operation and Governance. I apologize that you got that such last minute, but that can and should go through all three readings, because we'll need to hold two public hearings on that before passage. So that will allow for plenty of time to schedule those public hearings. For the second piece, the airport lease, I know the mayor has asked that that be passed, that the three-reading rule be suspended tonight. If that is your intention, I will need an amendment, a motion to amend that ordinance, because it doesn't currently declare an emergency to exist. So if you'd like to suspend the three-reading rule, I would just ask that, prior to that, someone make a motion to amend, adding that it's an emergency, please. Now for the more lengthy, looking at our old business, the PFAS. So last week, myself, the mayor, and Safety Service Director, we had a Zoom conference with our proposed legal counsel, our legal representation for that class action settlement. It was Douglas Hanum. He specializes in environmental law, and he has partnered with Mike Stagg. So we met with both of them. Mike Stagg has been appointed by the court to the executive committee overseeing the entire litigation, meaning he represents all of the plaintiffs as a class, all of the water sources involved. So he's very highly qualified. I would very much recommend him. They did give us a website that is very informative, has a lot of information about the settlement and about PFAS in general. I emailed it out to all of you just right before this meeting, so I apologize you didn't have it previously. I will put it out for the public if they would like to check it out themselves. It's cleangroundwater.com. Very informative. And you will actually see there is a video on that first page from Mike Stagg, so you can see him and hear from him personally. I understand there's a lot of, this is very complex. There's a lot of issues going on. So it's perfectly acceptable if you guys choose to table it tonight. Our deadline for submission of our Phase 2 claim is December 31st of this year. So we have time to table it, kind of mull it over a little bit. I wouldn't recommend we sit on it for too long, just because there's a lot of testing and things that need to be done. And on that note, if we retain them, they would be providing all of the costs upfront to do all of that testing. There would be no cost to the city upfront. There would be no cost unless we do receive a settlement. And their contingency fee is the one-third. And we are looking at, depending on the levels of PFAS found in the testing, we're looking at between $250,000 to $2 million settlement. They would be testing for, so currently, I know I mentioned before that we have had no detections of PFAS. So what we have tested has been the output, so what is going to the customers. So there's been no PFAS detected in the water that's getting to our customers. What they will do is they will test all of our sources, so all of the input, all the water as it comes into our plant. And they say it's very, very unlikely that we won't have even a minuscule amount, even an amount that is, I think they said the EPA requires, it was like six, four? Four parts per billion? And even if we come in at two, we're below that EPA threshold, we're still looking at that large settlement between $250,000 to $2 million. So it's still safe, but we need to remediate that. And I will say, one of the processes for remediation that they mentioned was the carbon filters. So that's what we have been using, so that's probably taking that out for all of our customers. There was a lot. So we have, they don't, so they test for over 20 different PFAS chemicals, not just, you know, the two main ones that were mentioned. Currently, 3M and DuPont are the defendants that have settled in this case. So we're looking at really settlements from each of them. And there are other defendants, other companies that are, that could be liable, that haven't settled yet. But if we retain them, retain Mr. Hanum and Mr. Stagg, they will file claims for us in those other settlements, once those defendants settle as well. Right now, like I said, the whole settlement is for our drinking water. There will be separate settlements and actions for wastewater that they will file for us. They mentioned fire training and airport. If we have an airport that's been contaminated, or fire training sites that have been contaminated by PFAS, they will also test those and file actions for us on that as well. I think I covered everything that I can think of right now. Any questions? I know that was a lot.
I'd just add that four parts per billion is the equivalent of one drop of water in an Olympic swimming pool. So that's the level of contamination they're talking. Also, DuPont and 3M have settled, but there are 18 other manufacturers who have not settled yet.
On the list of manufacturers, where is DuPont and 3M on the list? Are they one, first, and second biggest producers, or are they middle of the road?
I know DuPont, the settlement that we're looking at from DuPont is much, much higher than 3M. So I know DuPont is bigger on that scale than 3M. I'm not sure about the others on the list. We really didn't get into those.
No, I tried to look that up, and I could not find it. But I know there are other companies like Selenese that produced it. But I was looking for the list of the total of 20, and I couldn't find it.
To try to nail it down, it maybe has to do geographically, where they're located, and how close they are to water supplies, a whole lot of variables, so maybe it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I can tell you that some of the companies are in India, and some of the companies are in China.
The manufacturers?
Manufacturers.
Well, the Chinese are so environmentally conscious, I'm shocked.
So they're going to test the inbound water?
Correct.
We don't test that at this point for PFAS, right?
We have not tested it for PFAS, no.
We test our outbound water at the plant before it goes out to the consumer.
Correct, yes. And that's where the PFAS has not been detected. So they'll test all of our sources, so all the reservoirs and the Portage River, and any wells that are...
There's no wells.
Yeah. I don't specialize in water.
There's, and then also our output from the waste treatment plant, they're going to test that?
So the wastewater is a separate action, but they will handle that as well.
If we enter this agreement, that's picking up both of those class action suits?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions this time? All right, thank you very much. We will now move into the public portion. Can it wait till we...
I still have one more question. Going to address one more question.
Sure.
I'm trying to think of the appropriate way. If we go ahead and participate in the class action suit, and we get some money for it, does this negate 10 years down the road us participating in anything?
That's a very good question. So actually, it preserves our claim, because if we, even if we don't have any PFAS detected right now, if they, we'll come back and we'll keep testing, and in three years, five years, we come back and we have detectable amounts then, then we will get money. So it's preserving our claim for the statute of limitations, if that makes sense.
Unless I misunderstand this, this really is a, this is kind of a no-brainer. We probably need to sign on this. If it's not going to jeopardize litigation down the road, if the need arises, I don't see a problem with it.
If you accept this money, you are signing a settlement with DuPont and 3M. You cannot go back and sue them, I don't believe.
We can't, but the settlement includes future. It includes PFAS for the future.
But not with 3M and DuPont?
Yes, with 3M and DuPont. We can't file a whole separate action, a new action.
Okay.
But this action itself goes on to the future. It's not like, as of today, you know, all damages, we forfeit all future damages. That's not, that's not how it operates.
If I'm not mistaken with wind waste, there was a settlement proposal that went out to the residents of Fostoria probably, what, two or three years ago? And if you signed a joint part of the class action suit, I believe it was 80, 100 bucks that people got. But if they signed that, then they were not eligible to get sued for any further damages with wind waste.
Yeah, that was a whole different situation, and I wasn't involved in that at all, so I really don't want to speak on it. That didn't involve the city. I don't know all of the details on that, but that's, I wouldn't confuse that with this.
Okay.
That's completely separate.
As this would move forward, then it comes down actually to the mayor's signature at some point, once you get all the paperwork and everybody, you know, we've got some time here to read through and look up some more stuff. I guess, my thought was, is that it should be, and I'm not a big fan of committees, by any means, I think they slow the works down somewhat. But I think there should be something put together with the three of you there, and maybe a council member, to sit down and go over this, you know, before we get the Don Mano on the bottom line of it, to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Because once we, until it's signed, it's nothing, you know. But once you sign it, that's it. So I, not that I don't trust anybody here, I'm just saying, rather than put it all sort of on the mayor, I think that it needs to be, I know we've hired the attorneys, so you're going to take their legal advice.
We haven't hired them yet.
Well, once we get to that point, thank you. So I just think there ought to be a little more input from either, you know, all of you and somebody here.
So I guess that's why we're proposing the outside council, because they're the experts in class actions, in environmental law. They're the experts in all of this. It's their job, if we hire them, it's their job to be representing our best interest. So I mean, yeah, we could sit down and read through this settlement, but we're not going to understand it better than they do. I mean, it's not any of our expertise.
Right, but I think a lot of times, expertise can go by the wayside, and common sense needs to take over. So that's where I'm coming from with it, so, just as a point down the road. I'm done, and I think Councilman Cassidy's done, so.
Any other questions at this time before we move on? All right, we will now move into the public portion. There are three groups that have requested time to speak. We just asked that you state your name for the record, even though I'm going to announce you to come up. And we asked, as you are on the agenda, to limit your comments to 10 minutes or less. The first person up this evening is Brenda Carr. Okay. Yeah, just come up and state your name, so we can just make sure it's correct in the record.
My name's Gerald Carr. I live at 461 West Lidle Street, Lot 47, the Westgate Village. And I'm here tonight to ask first, has there been an increase in water rates in the last six months?
Yes. Is it?
First of the year.
So nine months ago.
First of the year there was.
Well, are you charging, has there been an increase in the amount you charge for a cubic foot of water? The reason I'm asking is that we have new owners, and they want to metering our water, they're just assigning something to us. In the last two months, we've incurred a 44.6% increase in our water use, charges. We have not, to our knowledge, used more water than we ever did before. They quit reading the meters, and they tell us this is legal. But my question is, how much of this is actually a profit for them, paying you for the city, for water that they're using, and then overcharging us? That's what I feel is happening. Excuse me. Our normal monthly bill for water averaged per month from Flag Homes, who was there prior to this Bright Star Communities, was 33.43, and that included water, sewer, and an amount allowed for reading the meters. Presently, we're paying 48.35 average, this last two months. And I took the last two months that Flag owned the place, and I'm comparing them here for you. That's an average monthly increase of $14.92, or 44.6%. I feel that's awful high for an increase for somebody that's on fixed income. And I just came here to see if there's possibility, if there's anything the city can check into to find out why that rate is so high. So I thank you for your time, and...
We'll have to look into it. I don't think any of us are familiar enough with how it's billed to answer your question.
So talking to our neighbors is an example. They pay, just a couple, an older couple, but they're still working, but they pay the same as Brenda and I. But somebody that has one person in the family pays much, excuse, less. Someone who would have five in the family, or four in the family, or three, would pay, you know, progressively more.
So I'm pretty sure that most of the trailer parks have a master meter. Then they control all the lines through the trailer park?
Yes.
And then they, then they handle the billing from there, so we...
They take the bill from the master.
So we would only bill the trailer park ownership group, and then they would, they would...
Are they allowed to make money on that?
I don't know. I know it's a private entity that, so once the water gets to them, then they decide how they handle it from there, because they meter it. Either they either meter it or don't meter it from there. We meet, I think there's a master meter where the water comes into the trailer park, and then they're responsible for that. So I honestly don't know what we could do to help, because I know that there is a whole separate state entity that is responsible for trailer parks in the state of Ohio, but...
I understand that. And when they first originally put the meters in, I can't tell you who owned it. Somebody from here in Ohio bought it from the original owners, when we moved in in '96. And they said that they wanted to charge us extra for the water. And the city would not go along with us, said you can only charge them for what the city would charge them for their usage. We were metered at the time, they just put meters in. But they were allowed to charge us to read the meters, but it was a given amount. I'm sure if it was looked into, you could come up with them figures, but I can't remember what the amount was. When we got our bills from this place that did the billing, they would not have that listed, the actual meter reading part. It would just be a total sum, and...
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure how much we could, we'd be able to help you, just because technically, our customer is the trailer park, and then they decide how they bill.
Be selling the water to us at a higher cost.
Yeah, so I don't know how much we could, I don't know how much help we could be, but we'll certainly look to see if we can be of any help to you. But I think that's how it works technically. They're, they are the water customer, and then they distribute it from there, and then they bill their tenants of the trailer park from there.
All right, well, I appreciate you guys' time, and thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person on the docket this evening for the public portion is James Mosher. It's James Mosher here. Seeing now, we'll go to the final person that requested speaking time, that is Deb Tyson.
Okay, I have quite a bit to say tonight. One of the things I have to say is, I am proud of Fostoria, I'm proud to be here. We have some very good people, people that are ordinary people, whatever. But I meant just like what the gentleman just said before me. And I happen to have firsthand knowledge of their particular trailer park and some of the legal jargon. I've seen it. So I don't know how, yeah, I haven't looked at a lawyer yet. But I would have thought that if the water came from the city, you could, that's like double dipping. So there does need to be... So there does need to be an explanation on that, because you guys are losing revenue if that's the case. And I know you guys had to increase our, everybody's water bill and sewer bill to make everything work. But this isn't fair all the way around for anybody, because it's not benefiting you guys that are dealing with the sewers, or dealing with the storm usage, or the water that has to be treated. And you guys have expenses and all that. I think we all need to work together and figure this out, because we have like five trailer parks in this town. Now, some might not be in the city limits, that's true. But I do believe Westgate is in the city limits. And I know there's a couple others that are in the city limits. And I mean, you want to attract people here. And as a fact, Westgate just put five trailers in, so they're trying to bring people to Fosteria, which is great. But I mean, that just doesn't sound right. So I know there may not be nothing that can be done about it, but it doesn't seem like it's fair, because you guys had to raise the rates to make operation work, and now somebody else is profiting. It, it just doesn't make sense. And the other thing I wanted to say is, I've noticed people rolling through stop signs. And we're about to have a four-way stop here on Tiffin, and I'm waiting for the day when everybody rolls through it. Because they're going to do it just to do it. And it doesn't, because I said something about it in, in joking. And they says, "Well, the police don't even pay attention." I says, "Police station's right there." You don't know they're not sitting in their cars? And they walk. So I'm just worried pedestrians are going to get hurt. And I don't know what else we can do. So that's my concerns. But and I, I do like what was done with Lidle Street. But Columbus Avenue is going to get tore up. I don't know if there's plans to pay, repave it when Columbia Gas gets done or whatever. But I hope so. Any questions for me?
Thank you for your time. We will now open up the meeting to anyone else from the general public that wishes to address counsel. We just ask that you state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Paul Hollison, 118 and a half West Center Street. Just a reminder, since I did the minutes of the Records Commission meeting that we had this month, the next Records Commission meeting, so you can mark your calendar, is scheduled for February 19th, a Thursday, 2026, at 2:00 PM. So I'm giving you plenty of notice, of course, the members of the mayor, the law director, and the finance director, and myself. So I'm giving you notice of the meeting for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Happy birthday.
Any other members of the public wish to address counsel this evening? Seeing none, we'll move into old business. I want to note for the record, the first item on old business continues to be tabled. Is there any other points or motions on the floor before we move into the second item in old business? Go ahead and start old business then.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Law to enter into, in, wait a minute, sorry. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Law to enter into a contract for legal representation in order to seek funds for PFAS for Ever Chemicals water testing and remediation for potentially contamination water in the city of Australia and declaring an emergency to exist.
Move we table?
Is there a second for that?
Second.
We have a motion by Podak, a second by Lake to table. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
This ordinance has been tabled.
An ordinance to amend the traffic control map and file for the city of Fosteria, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Cassidy to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
All right, that does pass and becomes ordinance number 2025-62.
A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs to execute contract as required and declaring an emergency to exist.
That was the second reading of that ordinance. And that concludes old business. We'll move into new business.
An ordinance approving the city of Fosteria plan of operation and governance for the implementation and administration of the city's municipal natural gas aggregation program and declaring an emergency.
That was the first reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance to authorize, direct, and empower the mayor to enter into a lease agreement for use of certain specified structures on a certain portion of the real estate, commonly known as Fosteria Metropolitan Airport, with Klein Custom Concepts LLC doing business as Angle of Attack Aviation.
I would move that we insert language to reflect that this is an emergency. I would also, at this point, recommend that we suspend the three...
We, we can only do one motion at a time, sir. Is there a second to the motion to add the clause declaring an emergency to exist?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to declare an emergency to exist as, to include that in writing in this ordinance by Cassidy, a second by Mendoza. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
All right, this ordinance now reads, including declaring an emergency to exist.
I would recommend I make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Right, that is an order at this time, and it has been seconded by Baker. So we have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Baker, to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
No.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended.
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a motion by Lake to adopt, a second by Baker. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
This does pass. It becomes ordinance number 2025-63. You have the last piece of?
I have. Oh, I have.
Oh, I can read the last one?
Okay.
So we do have an ordinance, and this will be the reading. To amend section 951.01 of chapter 951 of the codified ordinance of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled Hours of Operation, adding a provision for overnight parking at the Fosteria Rail Park. And that will constitute the first reading of that ordinance. Is there a need to go into executive session this evening? Seeing none, is there any miscellaneous business this evening? Also seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Baker. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned at 6:41.